Hello, Ms. Wood. Ms. Wood.
Did our pastor talk to you? For me, there was a lot. How did he talk to you? About...
No, he has not. Let me make myself known before I forget and then... That's what pastor said. Uh...
About just those places.
Yes.
And I think it... Thank you. But we have concrete...
Daryl Seaman, whom we talked about, that he was going to talk to, as we discussed, the food bank about putting one there. And I said, I thought they'd be directing a lot of traffic to there anyway. Second one, Shane Ford, had told him to take the purple one under that oning across from St. Solomon. On the speedway. Not concrete there. They can never walk through. So we're going to get free to put. My thoughts on the other one is our little park that we've got across from... You should be telling me to switch up, but I always come back.
Yeah, yeah.
There's a park across...
Oh, no, of course.
Oh, yeah. Yes.
The dude had that helmet on, he just makes a gun.
Okay. There's a... His little park there is picking out the drive-throughs to come through or to walk in.
It messed their bike oil pretty bad. And then their alignment machine on the inside got screwed up pretty bad. And then some of their, like, computer equipment stuff inside the shop actually area.
That keeps them far enough apart. So I had to talk to Daryl about that spot right there.
I think that was my concern was we were just going to put it on some property.
Well, if they put it at the food bank that they have in Florida property, I guess we're going to have to pass Haiti. But then, uh, then it'd be the park owned us and Shane Ford's already shit. They're good with the awesome stuff. So that takes care of the problem.
I'm okay with whatever. I just want my children to know. I don't want to turn around and say, "As good as we came." I love this private. That's three of them.
There you go.
That is a big private. Yeah.
It is, sir. How are you?
I'm all right.
How are you?
I'm good, Mr. Dade.
Yeah. I've been around. Around.
I hear you.
Well, there you go. I'm the person who called it.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, they said... Do you... We got... We got Dave, so...
Yeah.
So I'm in line from passing that we had any work that's there. I mean, by more of one thing, like, yeah. So, well, the... It wasn't big deal, so I love that. I said, do you know, don't put it in this corner? I didn't need a more than that. He called, but... He's got a little... He ain't never know. I love it. I love it. He called me up. I'm calling him. I don't give a yesterday. And there you go. Good. Way back on it. Again. I don't know. That's the year for Congress. Now, he didn't tell me so, he just said he tried to Congress. Well, I will say we had that Congress. Here's the point. It's probably a promise. We're busy. We're running slow when I have to go. I'm going to be wrong. I'll take the purpose that make them put water to that fire. Well, that's a nice report for a fire marshal. I'm going to pack it right on me. Yeah, that's fine. I'll pass it on Michael. There you go. That's what I said. Well, we just, uh, Michael really just ordered that. About that. Um, actually, that's all he does. He works that shift, works it out. When you guys die, you would just like to go to all the... When we hunt stuff here. Because usually what happens is I would have been one of them. We had one more on it. It's just... So now Michael says, I'm dealing with... Sir, I shall order... Well, he was wrong, but now I got it. So now Michael says, I'm dealing with... Mr. Levin, after calling you. Oh, I know. Don't feel bad. He just go a lot. He gave you the last... That's in his pocket. He says, he stays on top. Yeah. I'm like, true. You know. Always want to say in that first one here.
Did you know what happened?
Three. Where it looks in the press. Yeah. You got to care for your boy. Yeah. So, yeah. This little thing. The other couple there, I'll take a grand one. So she didn't back there.
You know, of the...
I don't know. I don't know. I didn't know for years what this is. But I said, I don't know. I thought sometimes I saw it. That I could pick all these things. I know. I got a camera. That's on the Georgia. Georgia's very strong. So... What was saying, they... I was just at the next... I don't know. It's wabba. Outside City of York. He stays up out of the ground. Yeah, that's... It is just a small mountain. Where it's like a... You can just... Like, they have a... I don't know. Working back. They let... Roswell, building itself. Another river. Or break. I think we can shut that all down and shut. I don't put the rip right now. They all have much staff. And every...
I'm tired of watching the Rams.
To get that water. Actually, right after I went to Silver River, they were doing... Real close on the bill. Yeah. Yeah. That's a... They did for everyone. We talked to whoever's over there. No idea. That's what I'm saying. No idea. Can y'all figure that out? I'm going to keep going. I'm going to... More money, I think. Yeah. Everyone, everyone, they think that. Yeah. They do that thing. Coming in at the end. Yeah. First way it was. Yeah. I mean, they've got the majority of all that life there. Well, the next one is... I'm feeling... Just didn't put a hide in there on the side. You know, put the roller up there. And then there's a part that... It's up. Well, they called me before they started letting one. They said, "These don't plan for housing." And so I called it off. Called it. And we went. And don't be all like that. I don't know. Y'all would be saying that thing. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. My name is Jason Stewart. It means great.
My name is... But I have a call to come for you tonight, Lord. We thank you for us. We thank for our town, Lord. We thank for each and every person who's in the building. Pray that you keep your hands upon each one of our city council members as we make decisions for the city, Lord. We ask that you touch, guide, and direct each of our police, fire, and safety officers as they do their jobs. And we'll keep your hand upon our soldiers and veterans. We ask all this in Jesus' name.
I thought I was making a word by asking Mr. Toddie for a little coffee.
Brett Parker. Bonnie Winkles here. Erin Rowe here. Tammy Slinker here. Jerry Bradley. Jason Stewart. Linda Smith. Hazel Riley here. Donnie England here. Stevie Wood. Here.
Now, we have a forum. Give copies of minutes from the August meeting. I'll be the man to look over. I'll understand the motion. Go through.
I'll make the most of it. Go through. I second.
Most of them made it. Bonnie Winkles, second, Tammy Slinker. Any discussion? All the clerks say aye. Opposed, no. And through, financial reports also in your packet. And Mr. Rick O'Grady.
Fair Lord, if you... That much is approved.
Jason Stewart, my most approved. Stevie Wood, second. Any discussion? All the clerks say aye. Opposed, no. Let it stand through. All right, Parker for four. Captain Henry. That's near board. Chief... Chief Kepner's not here. Says she's not in her board. Miss Plaid.
The only report, I hope that your complaints have stopped about the water. We are back up and running and everything's good. Everything else, we're taking care of it that goes along. Uh, any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
Okay. Committee of the four. No. I mentioned all that we... We know how to ask about lines. With the... Okay.
Yeah, I have. I have those closed.
All right. Board reports.
All right. I understand you're beginning to hear. Since January of this year, we've got twenty-three houses that...
Twenty-three houses being built?
Yeah.
Anybody else? Want to see any business? We're starting out with new business. Uh, let's see. First on the agenda is resolution number twelve sixty. At the last meeting, you approved the advertising for RSQ for grant writers and consultants. Advertising for this place in Jonesboro Sun. We've got one reply from municipal partners, Arkansas LLC. Have a contract in your packet for municipal partners. Nothing after expected due to the resolution. And the resolution spells out compensation. Grant writers go into the grant, sometimes as much as ten percent or more. You look at that, you say, million dollar grant, ten percent, that's twenty thousand dollar paycheck. So kind of keep that in mind. And even five percent would be a fifty thousand dollar paycheck. Before reading the resolution, I'm going to ask Mr. Bill Campbell to speak briefly about his qualifications and what he's raised to the table.
Thank you, Campbell. You're here. Um, counsel, thank you for letting me address you. And I'm going to apologize for reading to you. But if you heard me try to wing it, we really appreciate the fact that I'm doing this. Um, I have first come to you as a resident of Kentucky Arkansas who grew up in Camden, a small town in South Arkansas. And spent maybe thirty years in the wind somewhere floating around the river of Arkansas. So I am well aware of our collective strengths and weaknesses in the South and in small and large. But I have worked for eight years in city government. Prior to that, I was a newspaper reporter and editor. And I returned last night, drove through your city about midnight from DC. And I've learned a lot of things about stuff that's very relevant right now. But throughout my time with the city of Jonesboro, I learned about the connections that are critical in those little rock in Washington DC for cities. And, uh, and that don't... That won't drop into my team. I don't think that works. And then I started looking around and noticed that a lot of the cities lack the bandwidth to go after everything that's required to get a grant and pay for, usually, with usually a percentage of a grant, you know, a large grant, could be out. Some cities can't dream of it because they can't afford even a ten or twenty percent of a different. So, um, I've learned also the value of developing contacts, which is why I was in DC. But I have some really key friends up there. One of whom is Sergeant Arquinton, who's the liaison to White House for the National Education Association. If you ever need that, keep that in mind. She loves to hit care of Arkansas. And she has... Not that we're talking about education, but she has connections to everybody. And she knows everybody. And this introduced me to connections. I also have a friend from Louisiana. And Teddy goes out. He has, his name's Adam Tare. The mayor has met him virtually. And he's got more than twenty years on Capitol Hill as a lobbyist for one of the most elite firms in DC. I say that humble. It didn't sound very humble. They really are. If you look up the Livingston Group, you will see that they represent nations as well as municipalities, uh, army providers, you know, all sorts of resources. And they will throw... Part of what they do is make sure once a grant request or in request, because we're also not looking at just grants. We're looking at getting the budget, you know, items for the federal and state budget. But they will walk... They will seek through the process. Everywhere I've seen, and until we partnered with Adam Tare in Houston, they... We in Jonesboro send off a grant. And then it's just like, you know, you're whispering in the wind to find out whether it's... You want it or not because of what people are thinking, what they're saying. Well, these guys make sure that they follow up. They check, "Got what you need and what... What can we do to help you?" They literally have some fundraisers for our elected congressman up there. And as I told you, Mayor, I don't know whether it's impact or... They showed up on time. So I'm sitting in hell. Um, and Jonesboro, the last three and a half years, has received more than twenty million dollars through the work of Adam Tare and Livingston. And when you're talking about percentages, we figured it out. I was with Adam the other day. We figured out that what the city had was less than two percent of what it received in grants. And that's pretty good, pardon me. So, uh, I think that's something that really struck me. I feel my role will be as connector, would be as connector to ensure that your needs and wishes are not only seen by the decision makers, but kept in front of them, as we said. And, uh, even if that from the major movement beyond our own elected officials. And I'll tell you what that meant in one grant. It meant Adam had connections in Louisiana to Mary Landers, who was a senator. I believe her brother might be one of his chief of staff with President. But he's well connected. So we use those resources. When we needed a Democrat help to get funding, we called a judge and another elected official in Mississippi that we had worked with. And so that's not to say that we don't believe in the Senate Department because we've been in, of course, in our representative. But we're proud of that. But we do have what's given. Do not do to... There may be a sense of urgency right now. And Brandy probably can tell you a little about that. One of the greatest things right now is going on, and this is what I thought you made really excites me, is last year, year and a half ago, Congress passed the largest funding budget in history to re-construct the infrastructure of America, America's small city. One point six trillion dollars. And it's strictly for cities under, I think, twenty-five thousand population. Maybe more than that, but it's... Or we'll have to see it. And it's the first year they gave out three hundred and eighty million. Sounds like a lot, and it is a lot, but it's nothing against one point six million. So trillion. So they, uh, they have created... They... The National League of Cities partnered with Bloomfield Agencies and has created what we call boot camps. And this is where Brandy came in because she has signed up already. I'm signed up on, I think, three boot camps right now. And the mayor will join on anything that he chooses to. Because these boot camps produce, have produced not only twice the amount of WIG grant applications, but twice the payout of among the leaders. So these are free boot camps. That's the greatest thing. And mayor determines who represents the city. And I would be among the partners at least in doing that and guiding that and steering, once we get through the boot camp, the grant or if this takes a grant, through the process with my people in the city. So, um, I think, uh, I think this is the first and most important thing for cities like Truman, because there is no... There is no match for this funding. That will change, very little could change with the precedent next year. But this will happen. If this will be funded, we'll finish the grants up in June or February. By April or May, we'll know what we got. Now, that's not the only thing. I offer, I offer anything, any of these connections that I have. I offer resources for the mayor. We met. I don't know if the mayor would be disgusted with the mayor. It's appropriate that we met with people who were trying to do some things with your city. And I think that's always going to happen because, you know, when you're sixty-two years old, you've met some people. You've moved around a little bit. So I think, I think I do have the connections to prevent this from being any chance of failure. As we say up in the disclaimer, there are no promises. But I will promise you, if we go very long without getting an adoption, I'll be working for him at the tree. For a while, because I can't... I mean, it's not a doubt. We're sixty-two. Like I said, I can retire. I just handed out, I can retire. But I'm going to have Truman, and I want to give it back. Is that too long? Anybody have any questions?
I do.
Sure.
The money that you're talking about, the one point six trillion dollars for cities under twenty-five thousand population, is there, you said, like, three hundred thousand they give out already? Is there like a cap per city?
Three hundred and eighty million.
Or eighty million, I'm sorry. Is there a cap per city? Like, is there an amount that we could get?
Um, there are certain grants that... But they can, they can decide by what we explain to be our needs and what we have done to show our skin and... So if you have projects that the mayor and I may have talked about, or may not have, you've got things going on that want to be pitched. And you're saying, you know, having money until a certain time. This, this is, "Oh, my goodness, they've already got this amount. We're going to finish it for them." So, uh, so then, you know, there is technically probably a limit, but there is not a specific amount that's yes or no to be limited.
So obviously, there's an urgency to get, and to get some of this money.
In this particular case, there is urgency because I want to attend the boot camp. I want to have every advantage possible. And I can't think of having more than it's a free boot camp. And the resources in DC that we have. And, you know, if the mayor wants to, you know, he mentioned maybe wanting to be able to... It was homeland security people, so you can't get them. It was homeland security people, so you can't get them there. I said, well, I'm
Again, it's not something that you can like quick when you're trying to pull this together.
It's hard to get those, it really is.
Yeah.
And that's, that's why, again, that's the urgency too. Because if we miss this cycle, we wait for next year to see if there is. Something will be available next year, we totally will be certain because you know that
So is this for any day that I was to be there?
It's, there are several different categories, different infrastructure, water, kind of a little part of the point there. We talked about the water career after. Yeah, there's, so, but there are different categories, so there's about four categories going on this time. But all the other stuff we can get, if we get before our congressman, and you know that Rick Crawford is on a budget committee, so is Senator Bogdanovich. They, they have key power to have made these decisions. And they will get some, and let me tell you what, if we have a very powerful senator to really work with. This year, Arkansas got two grants out of this. I think one was in Russellville, one in Arkansas, but Wisconsin. I read the type page before I flipped it, and it's like fifteen. And I think that had something to do with the election year and swing state. It's reading between the lines, but there's, there's a lot of things that they've done and we'll try to do everything. I'll also try to break to you ideas that sound like they might be useful. If it's not on your plans yet, you know, that's, you know, in my favor. We'll be perfect with opportunities. Any other questions? If not, thank you, Mr. Campbell, I might ask Ms. Hotty if she would read the resolution.
Resolution number twelve sixty, twenty twenty-four. The resolution authorizing the city of Premon Arkansas to enter into an agreement with municipal partners Arkansas LLC for professional consulting, lobbying, and grant writing services. Whereas the city of Premon Arkansas, the city recognizes the need for professional consulting and lobbying services to effectively pursue and secure grant money. And whereas the city has placed an advertisement soliciting proposals for such services. And Bill Campbell of Municipal Partners of Arkansas LLC has responded with a proposal, including his qualifications and terms. And whereas the city has reviewed the proposal and determined that the services of municipal partners would be beneficial in assisting the city in its grant writing efforts. And whereas it is in the best interest of the city of Premon to enter into an agreement with Bill Campbell of Municipal Partners of Arkansas LLC to provide these services. Now therefore being resolved by the city council of the city of Premon Arkansas. Number one, approval of the agreement. The city of Premon hereby authorizes the mayor to enter into an agreement with municipal partners of Arkansas LLC for professional consulting, lobbying, and grant writing services. The services provided by municipal partners will primarily focus on writing and securing grants for the city. Number two, term of compensation. The term of the agreement shall commence in September twenty twenty-four and municipal partners' compensation shall be set at two hundred million dollars per month for the remainder of the year. This agreement will be reevaluated in December twenty twenty-four in a non-mutual agreement of both parties. The contract may be extended through twenty twenty-five with annual reevaluations each December thereafter. Number three, payment schedule. Municipal partners shall be paid on or before the tenth day of each month for the services rendered in the preceding month. Nomination clause, the city of Premon retains the right to terminate this agreement at any time if the services provided by municipal partners are deemed unsatisfactory or unproductive. Similarly, municipal partners may terminate the agreement at any time upon providing written notice to the city. Number five, scope of work. The specific duties and responsibilities of municipal partners are outlined in the contract provided by municipal partners of Arkansas LLC and are incorporated by reference as part of this resolution. Number six, effective date. This resolution shall be in full force and effect from its passage and approval.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
My motion, please.
Donnie Eman, the mayor's vote. Jerry Bradley, second, any discussion? I want to point out, I told y'all this day one, that I would like to have a grant, that we need a grant writer. And I feel like the time has come and the opportunity presented itself. And I think his qualifications are well above for the cost. I don't think we could beat, hopefully he'll approve that if he approves this resolution. Anybody else? Not Ms. Hotty, well, call her, please.
Brett Parker?
For.
Bonnie Winkles, for. Karen Rode, for. Tammy Slager, for. Jerry Bradley, for. Jason Stewart?
For.
Linda Sandoz, for. Hazel Riley?
For.
Johnny Eman?
For.
Cindy Wood?
For. All passes, resolution passes, that is effective immediately. Thank you, Mr. Campbell, congratulations. Thank you, mayor, thank you, council. Thank you very sincerely and I will miss long before we're about business. So we start either in one day or two, Brandy. So anyway, we've had a debate over it today, so, you know, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Bye-bye. You know, we talked about, we keep, Rick and Brandy, and, you know, we sent her to Grant Writing Class and she actually started writing grants. We want to start her out small, small grants. If she jumps in, and this is my thinking, if she jumps into a big grant, eighty-dollar grant or whatever, and she goes through it all and there's not real good grants, then it might make an effect on her and on her reputation or her character of being able to write grants. So we'll start her out slow, and again, she's already started, so this will be helpful. Well, she's going to have a lot of backup now. I mean, don't mean me, I mean, I mean, the real person. Remember, I was thinking of this, professionals built the Titanic and amateurs built the ark, right? Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
All right, you should have received the folder, this detailing water meter project. It was raw footwork, working committee, a couple of, committee solved presentation for former services. About replacing water meters that hadn't been replaced as of yet with new AMI meters like we have in the city. This will be basically for the former Rural Water and Painway Water Association. The program spells out how the meters are paid for themselves by being more accurate. And plus, I haven't had somebody to actually blow out the reason either. Personally, we did study the actor of the show, the water loss that's not being accounted for in the building. This will be similar to the previous program that new meters that we already have, it's all his own. I would like you to read that information, go through it if you have any questions. You can add me if I can't answer it, and I'll, and honestly, I probably won't be able to answer a lot of, pretty technical. But I'll give you the information of the people at former services that you can contact and ask them questions. They'll be glad to answer. And get yourself familiar with it and then in October, when we're going to bring out the next one again, let them talk to you a little bit about what they've got and give them more details briefly. And hopefully we can make a decision on very kind of, but I just wanted to present this to you. Personally, from what I've seen, I think it'd be a good program that we can get these meters in, that need to be in. Some meters I know that have painware for six plus years old. And so I'm sure there's a lot, a lot of count on how much water would there actually pay them for. So anyway, that's, that's what I wanted to look at. If you have any questions, you can contact me if I can't, don't have that to do, I can get it. Or I'll give you the phone number to, to you to talk to, ask those questions to. Next is the resolution twelve fifty-nine. This is the contract between the city of Premon Service. This is going to be tabled in. The last time, if you remember, Mr. Gazeway wasn't happy with some of the language in the, and I agree with him after reading it and understanding, he wasn't happy with some of the language. Paul is now in there for, and he's giving them the language that needs to be in there, protect the city. And so he and their attorney are supposed to get together this week or next week and hopefully get it hashed out. And then in October, we'll come back with this, this again, hopefully have it all worked out, and we'll take care of that. All right, next up is seven thirty-eight. There was a lot of concerns and misunderstanding about what to do with the Parks and Recreation Committee work. So this information, there's things that were going through them. And I went to the last committee meeting and explained to them what this committee was for. And of course, that's spelled out in this new ordinance exactly what it's for. Explained that to them and told them for Sunday night, so I had to get ready to go to church, I just told them, right? Get ready to go to church, y'all make a decision. If you want the committee to stay together and be used for what the committee is for, and what I told them was for. And just like the committee was when I was in the early two thousands. We were there to help the directors and help them volunteer to keep the fields up, take games and take concessions and help with the scheduling of ballgames and stuff like that. And it's been that way with that league back then. And it was turned over to a contract and then we got the contract back, or we did away with the contract and now we're back with it. So I told them, you know, if you want this committee to be here for that reason, and that's what it was, then that's great. We'll rewrite the ordinance if that's what you want. They'll spell it out exactly in detail what your duties are as a commission. Or if you all want to do that, then it would be my recommendation to the council to dissolve the committee. And let Scott and Macy, the directors, handle the program. And when I left, I think I told them before I left that Scott and Macy or Cindy know what they want to do. And they came immediately and told me that the committee decided that they wanted to rewrite the ordinance and where it spells out what they can do, or what they're doing for. So that's what we've got, this ordinance. I'll let, ask Ms. Hotty if she would read this ordinance.
Ordinance number seven thirty-eight twenty twenty-four. An ordinance repealing ordinance number seven twenty-one, five fifty-two, and four sixty-one. Amending the name of the Parks and Recreation Committee and Director, defining the duties and responsibilities of the Sports, Recreation, and Events Committee and for other purposes declaring an emergency. Whereas the city of Premon Arkansas has previously enacted ordinance numbers seven twenty-one, five fifty-two, and four sixty-one, which established and appointed the Parks and Recreation Committee and the Parks and Recreation Director. And whereas the city of Premon recognizes the need to update and modernize the structure and functions of its Parks and Recreation Department to better serve the community's evolving needs, particularly in the areas of sports, recreation, and events. And whereas the city council deems it necessary to repeal ordinance numbers seven twenty-one, five fifty-two, and four sixty-one and do a new committee and directorship with revised duties and responsibilities to better reflect the current goals and objectives of the city. And whereas the city council finds that the immediate passage of this ordinance is necessary for the preservation of public health, safety, and welfare, particularly in ensuring the effective operation of the city's sports, recreation, and events programs. Now therefore being ordained by the city council of the city of Premon Arkansas, section one, repeal of ordinance numbers seven twenty-one, five fifty-two, and four sixty-one. Ordinance numbers seven twenty-one, five fifty-two, and four sixty-one are hereby repealed in their entirety. Section two, renaming of the Parks and Recreation Committee. The Parks and Recreation Committee is hereby renaming the Sports, Recreation, and Events Committee hereinafter referred to as the Committee. Section three, renaming of the Parks and Recreation Director. The position of Parks and Recreation Director is hereby renamed the Sports, Parks, Recreation, and Events Director hereinafter referred to as the Director. Section four, duties and responsibilities of the Sports, Recreation, and Events Committee. The Sports, Recreation, and Events Committee shall serve as an advisory committee for the Sports, Parks, Recreation, and Events Director, the mayor, and the city council. The committee's duties and responsibilities shall include but are not limited to the following. Number one, planning and scheduling. The committee shall work with the director of planning and scheduling all sports events, leagues, and recreational activities within the city. Number two, concessions management. The committee shall assist the director in decisions related to the operation of concessions at sports events, including pricing, inventory, staffing, and revenue management money derived from the concession sales. Number three, gate operations. The committee shall organize and manage the collection of entry fees at sports events, ensuring the proper procedures are followed for handling and accounting for gate money. Number four, maintenance of sports facilities. The committee shall collaborate with the director to maintain and improve the city's sports facilities and related facilities, ensuring they are in good condition for community use. Number five, appointment of program directors. The committee in coordination with the director shall recommend and appoint directors for specific sporting programs and events, such as baseball, softball, soccer, and senior recreational activities. Number six, community engagement. The committee shall serve as a liaison between the community and the director, gathering input and feedback on logistics regarding sports, recreation, and event-related activities and facilities. Number seven, election and terms. The committee shall elect a new chairperson and vice-chairperson each year in January. The committee shall meet monthly in a public meeting on a date determined by the committee. The committee shall consult the current members with their remaining terms unchanged. Members shall serve without compensation and may be reappointed for an additional two-year term, not consecutive years. All members are appointed by the mayor and approved by the city council. The committee may recommend new members to the mayor. Any member missing two consecutive meetings without prior committee approval shall be considered as retirement of that member and replaced. The new member will inherit the removed member's term. New members must serve on the committee for a minimum of one year before holding an office position such as chairman, vice-chair, or secretary. The director and deputy director shall act as executive secretaries to the committee in a non-voting role. Number eight, term management. The committee may solicit gifts, revenues, requests, or endorsements of money or property as donations or grants for the city of Premon subject to approval by the city council. All funds including concession money shall be turned in with receipt from the director or deputy director who will then on a weekly basis turn in the received funds to the city financial director. These funds will be added back to the Sports, Parks, Recreation, and Events Department budget. Number nine, special meetings. Special meetings may be called by the chairman or by written request into the secretary by three members of the committee at least three days prior to the requested meeting date. The committee shall select an appointment to fill any vacant officer The Committee shall select an appointment to fill any vacant officer position by a majority vote of the Committee, not just the majority of a forum. A majority of members shall constitute a forum which is required to hold an official meeting. Number ten, meeting protocol. All meetings shall be recorded, minutes taken, and meetings conducted in accordance with the Robert's Rules of law order, which includes following the agenda and body procedure. The Director will have the authority to appoint specialty positions within the Committee. Number eleven, conduct purpose. Committee members should conduct themselves in a manner that positively represents the City of Creighton and is not detrimental to the reputation of the City or the Committee. Section five, repeal clause. All ordinances, orders, and ordinances in conflict with this ordinance are hereby repealed. Section six, emergency clause. The City Council of the City of Creighton, Arkansas finds and declares that an emergency exists and this ordinance is necessary for the immediate preservation of public peace, health, and safety. Therefore, this ordinance shall be of full force and effect from, from and after its passage.
These motions approved?
I have a question. The emergency clause, can this not be put on through reading or what would make this an emergency if it comes?
So does the Committee itself can go ahead and continue to work the way that it needs to work? Cindy Wood, let's the motion to approve?
Okay.
Angie Wood, second, any discussion? All right, roll call, please, Ms. Hotty?
Brett Parker?
For.
Bonnie Winkles?
For.
Karen Rose?
For.
Tammy Slanker?
For.
Jerry Bradley?
For.
Jason Stewart?
For.
Linda Smith is absent. Hazel Riley?
For.
Donnie England?
For.
Cindy Wood?
For. Will it passes? Is it clear? I'm sorry? Oh, yeah. Yes, rewrite how much the motion, maybe like suspend the rule, or you know, how, in the second quarter? Justice Stewart, play the motion to suspend rule. Cindy Wood, second, any discussion? All the players say aye?
Aye.
All, no? I thought you read by Tower on two minutes. We agree with Tower on three, we must agree.
Ordinance number seven thirty-seven twenty twenty-four. An ordinance of the City. I'm sorry, that was the wrong one. An ord- ordinance number seven thirty-eight twenty twenty-four. An ordinance repealing ordinance number seven twenty-one, five fifty-two, and four sixty-one, amending the name of the Parks and Recreation Committee and Director defining the duties and responsibilities of the Sports, Recreation, and Events Committee and for other purposes declaring an emergency. Ordinance number seven thirty-eight twenty twenty-four. An ordinance repealing ordinance number seven twenty-one, five fifty-two, and four sixty-one, amending the name of the Parks and Recreation Committee and Director, defining the duties and responsibilities of the Sports, Recreation, and Events Committee and for other purposes declaring an emergency.
All right, is the motion? Here, Brandon, lay the motion. Justice Stewart, second, any discussion? Roll call, both please.
Brett Parker?
For.
Bonnie Winkles?
For.
Karen Rose?
For.
Tammy Slanker?
For.
Jerry Bradley?
For.
Jason Stewart?
For.
Linda Smith is absent.
Hazel Riley?
For.
Donnie England?
For.
Cindy Wood?
For.
That's what we, that's what we see. Normally I have everything out on my cheat sheet, I just didn't have it. All right. All right, next is ordinance number seven thirty-seven. This will be the second reading of ordinance number seven thirty-seven. Ms. Hotty, would you read it for us?
An ordinance of the City of Creighton, Arkansas establishing the judgment and pay for the elected part-time Creighton City Clerk position. Whereas the City of Creighton recognizes the need to clearly define the responsibilities and compensation for the elected position of City Clerk. And whereas the City desires to ensure that the duties of the City Clerk are performed efficiently and effectively. And whereas it is deemed necessary to establish a formal job description and pay rate for the part-time City Clerk position. Now therefore, being ordained by the City Council of Creighton, Arkansas, section one, establishment of job description. Job title, City Clerk, elected. Location, City of Creighton, Arkansas. Department, Administration. MLSA status, exempt. Job summary, the City Clerk for the City of Creighton, Arkansas is a vital elected administrative role, responsible for maintaining official city records, preparing and reporting City Council meeting minutes as well as committee meeting minutes and ensuring compliance with state and local regulations. The City Clerk serves as a liaison between the city government, residents, and other stakeholders, providing essential support to the Mayor and City Council key responsibilities. Number one, record keeping and document management. Maintain and safeguard all official city records, including ordinances, resolutions, contracts, amendments of City Council meetings and committee meetings. Ensure proper indexing, filing, and retrieval of city documents. Manage public access to city records in accordance with Arkansas Freedom of Information Act, FOIA. Number two, City Council support. Prepare agendas, packets, and other materials for City Council meetings. Attend all City Council meetings and accurately report meeting minutes. Disseminate approved minutes and other relevant documents to council members and the public. Number three, public relations and communication. Serve as a point of contact for residents, businesses, and other stakeholders regarding city policies, procedures, and services. Respond to public inquiries and provide information and assistance. Assist to coordinate public notices, advertisements, and announcements. Number four, compliance and legal affairs. Assist in the preparation and review of city ordinances and resolutions. Work with legal counsel on matters pertaining to city government and administration. Number five, additional duties. Assist other city departments as needed, such as, but not limited to applying for everyday and three-city membership to ensure efficient and effective city operations. Physical demands and work environment. Work is primarily performed in an office setting with frequent interruptions. Must be able to lift and carry files and documents weighing up to twenty-five pounds. Occasional travel may be required for training and professional development. This job description gives you a general overview of the position and does not encompass all responsibilities and qualifications required. The City of Creighton deserves the right to modify this job description at any time. Section two, compensation. The part-time City Clerk shall be compensated at a rate of one thousand dollars per month. Section three, effective date. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect from the, from and after its passage and approval with a pay requested by the Finance Committee to be retroactive to July first.
All right, do I hear all of them? Jerry Brandon, lay the motion. Hazel Riley, second, any discussion? Roll call, both please.
Brett Parker?
For.
Bonnie Winkles?
For.
Karen Rose?
For.
Tammy Slanker?
For.
Jerry Bradley?
For.
Jason Stewart?
For.
Linda Smith is absent.
Hazel Riley?
For.
Donnie England?
For.
Cindy Wood?
For.
All right, that has been approved and we'll move to the October council meeting, our final reading. And finally, we'll get a report from the Mayor's Youth Council. President Preston Wood, give us an update, please, sir.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Preston Wood and I'm currently the president of the Mayor's Youth Council. The primary mission of the Mayor's Youth Council is to involve youth in the community issues, decisions, and to empower youth leaders to become engaged within the community. We have had several meetings with Mayor Woods and for only being for the first year having this council, I feel like we accomplished a lot of our goals. We had our back-to-school block party at Truman Pre-K and it was a great success. This event brought hundreds of citizens together and every member of the Youth Council participated in this event. We also have the Wild Duck Festival Car Show coming up that will be held on October twelfth. Please come out and cheer your sport for the Youth Council. We are also taking applications for new members of the Youth Council on October fifteenth. Thank you again for your support.
Thank you for being here.
Like Brett, y'all were doing a great job and I appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Just like Cindy. Are y'all ready?
No, I'm, no.
All right, with that, uh, I'm the mayor for, uh, we have Clearwater. Thanks for being, and, uh, and all the wonderful folks. And during the beating that they took during this issue, uh, they, uh, they hung in there and they did a great job and I appreciate them and, uh, and the family. Uh, we originally had a projected date at the end of November for the opening of the fire station. Uh, due to a backlog of metal, uh, we were given a delivery date for the metal for November the first. A couple of days later, CNI kept on them and they moved production up and, uh, now we're delivering supposed to be October the second. I, I here recently, I talked to several people, as a matter of fact. Y'all know we had this money secured in February twenty twenty-three. We had to go through the proper paperwork and, and all the steps to get this done. And, uh, I hate it's taken so long. We had to, had to change metal companies, the previous metal company that CNI had hired as part of their subcontractors out of Colorado weren't producing, they weren't doing what they were supposed to do, what was in their contract. So basically they were fired and, uh, the next company, the, the next bid down for them was, was, uh, selected. Uh, they were initially going to have the here metal here by the end of September, that didn't happen. And of course, they even told us before, uh, that it wouldn't happen because, uh, they, the production of the metal had not been there and it's pre-engineered building. So that's what I told them, you know, we can't put a building up about a building without having the stuff to put it up with. CNI has done a great job of getting their job done there. If they didn't have other jobs to do, they'd be sitting there with their thumbs because they're caught up and they've got everything ready for the building. Uh, they told me that, uh, as soon as the metal was delivered, that, uh, whether from being in a month, they would have to build it up and then they could start it from the inside and hopefully by the end of January, first of February, uh, our guys would be in place where they need to be. So, uh, that's where we're at with the fire station. Uh, the nursing home is going great. Uh, they are expecting the opening date in early part of the year, hopefully by March. Uh, and they're talking possibly October, they'll start taking applications for jobs and applications for residents. So as soon as we get that information and they share that with us, I'm sure, you know, we'll help them any way we can to, to, to take applications. I think come by and pick up a copy of that page and help them out with that. So that's exciting to have them by there to go by and look at it. It's time to get cleaned up on the inside so we can take a tour of the inside, uh, where they're at right now. So if that comes about, I'll make sure everyone knows they had that opportunity. Um, yeah, that you be in it every time I drive by and my mom looks at it, she says, get my house built. So, um, anyway, uh, we're getting close to the end of the year, so we know what time they are, we'll be working on our budget for twenty twenty-five. Uh, I hope to have this ready for you in December. I want to call the heads, just like last year, have their working budget brought to me by October fifteenth so we can go over it and, and look at it and then hopefully get it narrowed down and get it brought to the, taken to the, uh, Finance Committee budget. And then they go over it and then present it to you hopefully in December, that's the plan. Um, we've taken down several more dilapidated houses over the last couple of months. We're still holding the start construction on Clearwater Tank and Treatment System very soon, uh, as well as phase one of the Sunken Lands Trail, uh, from the RDOT FAF grant, the five hundred thousand, four hundred ninety-nine thousand dollar grant that we got from RDOT. Again, it's no little thing, grants, you can't just take the money and start building. You gotta follow these steps and at a time and we pushed on that, pushed. Hopefully we'll get started on that pretty soon. Uh, we want to welcome Chad Rack's Coffee to town. Some people don't like Chad Rack, some people do. If you do or you don't, the way I look at it, it's another business in town. Honestly, I don't drink it. I drink black coffee. I might try some of their black coffee or something like others, but, uh, and I'm sure I will try it. Anyway, we welcome them to town. Riverside Subway, uh, the plant that was approved, uh, that we approved, the land sale too, is still moving forward. Uh, hopefully we can release more information very soon on that project. This is, uh, exciting news for all of us. We're talking, uh, by the time it's completed, uh, all three phases, a hundred and fifty new jobs will be secured from it. And, uh, and so we're grateful they chose us to be here. Bob, Sal, and I have worked for about nine months on this project. Uh, we spent a lot of time with the owners and kind of worked things out to get them in here. So we're excited to have them here. There's also another project still moving forward, uh, for Industrial Park. It'll bring a whole lot of jobs, it'll bring a few, but it'll bring a lot of revenue, which is again a good thing for, for the city. We'll release more of that as well as soon as we can. Steel Creek is moving forward, the walking trail and the pond, the landscape is near completion. If you haven't been by there, drive by and look at them, they look really good. Uh, it's only gonna look, look better as far as they get along. We will be looking at, uh, food truck vending ordinance. Uh, we have an ordinance in place that's old. Uh, I talked to, uh, Captain Avery, I talked to Jason Stewart and, uh, and some, some citizens that actually have food trucks and even some business people here in town and we discussed that. So we're gonna work on that and, uh, and hopefully bring that to you the next council meeting that you look at it, uh, and either approve it or not, end up a possible food truck corps, uh, which could be a good thing. We've, uh, looked at one in Hot Springs and if you've never seen that, you can actually bring it up on Google Earth and go down and look at it close at Steel Creek. So these are things that we're working on, uh, we, uh, we're gonna try and get that to happen. We, of course, it has to come through council first so we can make sure it's not illegally correct. A food corp, I'll play as a location set up for several trucks to locate in one location with tables, ladies, and gazebo's and stuff like that for them to sit comfortably, they can choose several different options of foods. So think about that, send me your thoughts and ideas. If you have any, anything about that you'd like to, uh, point out or recommend or suggest and, uh, and the person that, this man that's interested in doing that, we'll discuss it with him as well and see if we can make something like that happen. If there's something else to slip from my mind that I was gonna talk to a mission. But I'll remember next time to be in the mix. Uh, do we have any public open comments? There's no name. Hi, listen, there's none. There's one, there's not any. Okay. So with that, do I hear a motion to adjourn? Jerry Bradley, make a motion to adjourn. Jason Stewart, second, all the players say aye. Can I hear? I need to do a few steps for my daily walk.